Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Regular Meeting of Tuesday, January 15, 2019. My name is Michael Wentz and with us today is Nick Miller, our Sign Language Interpreter. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Reverend Ricky Burgess presents Bill 1283, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 797 of 2017 by increasing park reconstruction regional asset district parks by $54,290 from $965,000 to $1,019,290. Bill 1284, Resolution Amending Resolution 14 of 2019, realigning a total of $4,322,000 between various accounts within the 2018 operating budget. This transfer is necessary for the 2018 close to meet final expenditures for fiscal year 2018. Bill 1285, Resolution to authorize and direct the incurring of non-electoral debt through the issuance of a series of general obligation bonds of the city of Pittsburgh in the maximum aggregate principal of $62,435,000. Bill 1286, Resolution authorizing the mayor and a director of finance to enter into an agreement with Clark Hill to serve as a bond counsel for the purpose of rendering any and all necessary opinions with respect to the bonds and preparing such additional documents as may be necessary. Total costs shall not exceed $36,125 and shall be paid using proceeds from the debt issuance. Bill 1287, Resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in the total sum of $6,857.02 in favor of Diane and Ronald Bocky and Robert Pearson Associates as final settlement related to the action filed in the Common Court of Pleased Allegheny County. Bill 1288, Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in the amount of $5,303.34 to Pepper Hamilton LLP for professional consulting and legal services in relation to False Claims Act litigation. Bill 1289, Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Gleason and Associates in an amount not to exceed $9,946 for professional services in connection with a lawsuit filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill 1290, Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Kettleson LLC in an amount not to exceed $10,082.20 for professional services in connection with a lawsuit filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill 1291, Resolution authorizing pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, the mayor and a director of the Department of Public Works to accept a donation from Alcoa Corporation of $5,000 to be deposited into the Public Safety Support Trust Fund. Councilwoman Darlene Harris presents Bill 1292, Resolution authorizing the mayor and a director of Human Resources and Civil Service Commission to enter an agreement with Willis Towers Watson for services related to supporting the city with development and negotiations of employee benefits that are provided to city employees for a sum not to exceed $1,116,000 for over four years and for the payment of the cost thereof. Councilman Daniel Lavelle presents Bill 1293, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Hillman Family Foundation's Nina Hillman Fisher Foundation to provide funds to support the creation and support of a domestic violence team housed in the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $500,000 for this stated purpose. Councilman Corey O'Connor presents Bill 1294, Resolution authorizing a cooperation agreement providing for the transfer of funds not to exceed $6,750,000 to the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase of vehicles, equipment, and accessories for the use by the City of Pittsburgh Departments and Authorities. Councilwoman Teresa Cale Smith presents Bill 1295, Resolution amending Resolution 701 of 2015, now reads, "Resolution authorizing the mayor and a director of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter an agreement with PennDOT under which PennDOT will make improvements to and transfer in industry highways approximately 1.2 miles of roadway to the city and the city will transfer to PennDOT two current city street segments, those street segments being, one Euclid Avenue from Baum Boulevard to Center Avenue approximately 347 feet, and two Center Avenue from Euclid Avenue to Highland Avenue approximately 1,017 feet." Councilman Bruce A. Kraus presents Bill 1296, Communication from City Controller Michael Lamb submitting a fiscal audit of the City of Pittsburgh's Department of Finance, Real Estate Division, and URA of Pittsburgh Tax Abatement and Tax Increment Financing Programs dated December 21, 2018. Bill 1297, Communication from Jennifer Olzinger, Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget submitting a $1,000 donation on behalf of the Paul D. Fitzsimmons for the Public Safety Support Trust Fund. Bill 1298, Communication from Jennifer Olzinger, Acting Director of Office and Management and Budget submitting an acting pay approval for Erm Bukina and submitting an acting pay approval on behalf of the Department of Innovation and Performance for Catherine Gruber for acting pay policy revived in March 2018. This concludes the reading for today, Tuesday, January 15, 2019. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Welcome to the regular meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Tuesday, January the 15th, 2019. Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mrs. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Cale Smith. Ms. Strasberger.
Here.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you very much. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? We ask that you would then remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. We have no proclamations to be presented or to be read today, so we will move immediately into one will of council that we have that is presented by Councilman Coghill.
Mr. Coghill presents. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby approves the location for Prevention Point Pittsburgh to operate a needle exchange program at 2415 Sawmill Run Boulevard on Thursdays from 12 to 6 p.m.
Okay, may I have motion?
Second.
Do we have comment on the will of council? Councilman?
Yeah, I'll just make a brief comment. You know, Prevention Point, you know, of course my neighborhoods are afflicted with this disease and I think there's going to be some good numbers coming out. I think the county's going to have some good numbers, positive numbers moving in the right direction. We originally tried to put Prevention Point in a particular spot and the neighbors opposed it. We heard them loud and clear, so we decided not to entertain that spot. Now, from that point, the neighbors had said that they would be, you know, open to having it in the business corridor on Route 51. We found the perfect location. I wasn't responsible for finding it. The church, Fairhaven Church, actually, you know, went through their process with their board and their people, and they just want to make a difference like we do. So, I'm happy that we found a spot for them and I'd appreciate your support with this today.
Okay, thanks, Councilman. Further discussion by members? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, will of council passes. Thank you, Councilman. The next order of the business then will be public comment. Anyone wishing to comment before City Council, of course, has three minutes in which to do so. I would like to take this time to remind everyone here to speak that our rules of council are clear and that comment is limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are at this time or could at another time come before this council. We will not permit profanity and we will maintain order at all times. We ask that you would please begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for our public record. The green light will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have one minute to summarize your thoughts. When the red light comes on, then your time will have expired. May we have our first speaker, please? Ma'am, are you speaking? Come up, please. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna read something that gentleman, Jewish gentleman wrote down. His name is Ben Stain. "I'm a Jew and every single Jew, one of my ancestors, one of my ancestors was Jewish. It does not bother me even a little bit when people call those beautiful, leirup, bejeweled trees, Christmas trees. I don't feel threatened. I don't feel discriminated against. That's what they are, Christmas trees. It doesn't bother me a bit when people say Merry Christmas to me. I don't think they are slighting me or getting ready to put me in the ghetto. In fact, I kinda like it." So, as that said, I would like to add my own comment that I'm grateful to be in the City of Pittsburgh, to call it my home, as the only other place that I would like to be other than Pittsburgh would be Yerushalayim of Israel, Eretz Israel. However, the reason why I'm here is that I just want to have my short statement with wishing everybody best wishes for the secular New Year and that we are hoping that all resolutions will benefit the wide number of the people, not just a group of the individuals. And as that's stated, I believe that, I have it in my pocket and my jacket, I just didn't bring it with me, I have United States Constitution, and it is a document that one lady on the street addressed me and told me, "You're coming from religious Jewish neighborhood and you are here with the people with the guns and it looks like you are peaceful about it." Well, in Israel, we have Orthodox Jewish synagogues that have a designated person that is in the synagogue itself with actually, as a regular citizen, to have a concealed weapon. So, my opinion on that is that if Israel that does not have a United States Constitution can practice the Second Amendment accordingly, the right to bear arms for the regular person to protect themselves, I believe that we supposed to just not touch that document because when that lady told me that is very old document, the Constitution, my Torah is the oldest document, so the law of God is perfect.
Thank you. May we also have your name for our public record, please?
Melina Brachowick.
Thank you very much.
I live in Squirrel Hill.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
May we have our next speaker, please? Welcome, good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name's Harold Keller. I live at Scholarly Manor in Beachview, I'm attending there, and of course Representative Coghill knows why I'm here. Well, I've been touched with him and his assistant. Well, I'm just trying to get some answers because I want to be perfectly clear on what's going on here because on December, well, Scholarly Manor where I live is a senior high-rise, it was supposed to be, and I've lived there for several years and the rules have gradually changed over the years. There was a senior high-rise when it first opened and I talked to the homeowners in the neighborhood and they, and they say, "Well, that's what it was supposed to be, so how come they're letting other people in now regardless of age, whether they have disabilities, mental or physical?" Said, "Well, they changed the rules to that. I've only been there several years, I haven't been there the whole time while everything's going on." So, then I read the rules and it was gradually changed to where people with criminal records can come in, but they just can't come right in from prison. They have to go through rehab and halfway houses and be approved by a board. So, there are a few people with criminal records in there now, but on December 19th of 2018, they had a meeting at the 200th Ross Street, the housing office, and they had, it was Allegheny County Jail, they had representatives from the Allegheny County Jail there and some parole officers and, well, I, when I first, I heard about it at the last minute. When I first went, I thought it was just a housing meeting. I didn't know it was like an outside group. I later found that, I found that out from the people talking at the meeting and the prisoners presented presentations of why they should be let into housing. Well, they're already being given second chances providing their criminal record is in murder or child molestation, something like that. So, well, so they talked about being given second chances and, well, they're already being given that second chance and I said, "Well, maybe they want to change the rules and have it to where..." Because I talked to one of the men at the meeting who was running the meeting and said, "Well, maybe they want to change the rules, like make it easier for them to come in. Don't want anything like them coming in from prison, right from being released from prison and coming right in without halfway house or rehab or anything." So, I'm trying to get clear on what's going on. Housing, I talked to the manager of the building, they said they didn't know anything about this meeting and I said, "Well, why doesn't someone contact the Allegheny County Jail for the record of what that meeting was all about?" So, I'm just trying to get clarity on if they're trying to change the rules to make it easier for criminals, I don't want to say criminals, people with criminal records to come in and that's what, and that's what Reverend, that's what Representative Coghill, Representative Coghill and his assistant are working on for me right now. So, I look forward to the answers and see what's going on. The neighbors, I don't want to alarm them, but they're concerned, so thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for coming this morning. May we have our next speaker, please? Okay, Mr. Adams, good morning, welcome.
Good morning, everyone. I, like an idiot, left my notes at home, so I'm gonna try to take this from the top of my head, try to deliver it to you. Usually when I come before council, excuse me, Dave Adams, 119 White Pine Place, Pittsburgh, PA 15221. Usually when I come before council, it's not usually on my own accord, it's from the citizens who deliver a message and we send it to you. I'll be back tomorrow, but today I'd like to give a position statement in behalf of Martin Luther King Day to send a reminder to the City of Pittsburgh because we see a critical issue that's occurring culturally that is very disturbing and that is where we have children now that are going to be across schools, brown, black, white children, that are going to be confused in understanding what next month actually means. And that confusion is coming through a misidentification of calling Black History Month African-American History Month. There's a, that is a no-go. It's a slap in the black citizens and the black community's face because African-Americans were just created in the eighties. They have no history as of yet. To say African-American history dismisses and continues the American education system of omitting the critical thinking and reconstruction mindsets of black America. Our history is as deep as the Egyptian pyramids and as long back as the floods. To ignore that history by dismissing what it truly is, black history, not African-American history. And I need that confusion to be understood by people because if you don't know right now the difference between a black American and an African-American, then maybe you shouldn't be sitting in that position of political representation. And this is what the conscience group has been trying to instruct to you, that trends are changing socially. Black citizens, especially our young black adults, are no longer buying this African trip across the Mediterranean. We are beginning to understand that we were on North America before the Europeans came here. When you look at the natives and the copper-colored indigenous people of America, you're looking at black, Morshe citizens and human beings. So, the African narrative now from history and information technology, that narrative of this, "We come from Africa" is being slowly crushed and destroyed. And I think that Pittsburgh needs to understand that before we start grappling on slogans and different things that we try to make it collective and it's not. So, just keep in mind, I think it's an education system for those outside of the culture, that African-American and black do not equate to the same mindset and we need to think about that. And for black folks, we need to consider, will we be black or African-American because this is the cultural battle. When we talk about cultural wars in America, it's not the political division. We have also a cultural division taking place within our own community because the mindset now dictates how far we'll go in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. May we have our next speaker, please? Okay, good morning, Dr. Miller.
Dr. Ronald M. Miller, Bell Tuber, Global Intelligence Society Candidate for President of the United States 2020, American Physical Society, Division of Nuclear Physics. A concern of council is or are rules of council. From Pittsburgh City Rules of Council, one, Rules, Section 3, quote, "No rule of the council shall be amended or changed except by a majority vote of the members and after one week's previous notice to the members of council and writing of such change desired or to be affected." Three, Meetings, Section 4, Public Attendance Part C, Subpart 1 regarding public comment, quote, "Comment is limited to matters of concern, official action or deliberation which are or may be before council and unless determined otherwise by a majority of council members present is limited to three minutes per individual." Three, Meetings, Section 4, Part C, Subpart 1, nowhere says, "We do not permit profanity." The anti-prophanity clause was added to oral public comment instructions after a female citizen used the F-word, 29 March 2016, in public comment in which she questioned contact with me, contact that she initiated publicly in this room, involved herself in publicly and repeatedly. A plus, "I meet with no one privately without witnesses," but that she indicated, contrarily, publicly, 29, 3, 16, as a minus via a tell record which she herself destroyed, not leaving me alone, but saying in that public comment, I should, quote, "Leave her the F alone," during which public comment, you, Mr. Kraus, did nothing to interrupt or stop her and after which public comment, you suddenly began to read a public comment, Rule of Council banning profanity, without defining profanity or providing examples of such. One, if you took no vote securing a majority of Pittsburgh City Council to ban profanity from public comment and you did not, you and all eight other unobjecting counselors violated Rule of Council 1, Section 3, an illegal act. If you did nothing to stop a citizen from discrediting another citizen via public comment, the discredit or using vulgarity, inversion, behavioral inversion, no evidence whatsoever, you did nothing. You tacitly affirmed that discreditation as a concern of council. And if you colluded with the F-citizen to undermine the integrity of another citizen, soliciting her, you and the council engaged in an illegal act of defamation. So did she. You should resign or be subjected to procedures leading to your involuntary removal.
Thanks, Dr. Miller. Thanks for being here this morning. Welcome, sir.
Hi, my name is Aaron Arnold. I'm a resident of Highland Park. I'm also the Executive Director of Prevention Point Pittsburgh. I just wanted to make a quick word of thanks to Councilmember Coghill and the District Four Office staff for helping us. When we had some complaints back in September, it would have been very easy to sort of give up on the proposal before us, but thankfully, everybody recognized the importance of the work that we do. We are, in fact, in a crisis. We may have some good data coming out as far as a reduction in overdose fatalities across the county coming up, but I will urge you to remember that this does not mean that the issue is over. The number of fatalities is still unacceptably high. We also are seeing a lot of other issues surrounding drug user health and so even if we stop the fatalities, we still have a lot of people getting sick and a lot of people getting injured. We have a new outbreak of hepatitis A, there's been an ongoing outbreak of hepatitis C and I hope that we will never see it, but it's been happening everywhere around us, outbreaks of HIV that are related to sharing injection equipment and unsterile injection equipment being used and reused by individuals. So, if you don't have a Prevention Point location in your district yet, expect to hear from us in the future. We hope to be expanding our services as much as we can and I hope we'll have all of your support in doing so.
Okay, Mr. Arnold, thank you. Can we have our next speaker, please? Do we have further speakers this morning, which to address council? Okay, seeing no further speakers, we'll close the public comment portion of the council meeting. We'll go into presentation of papers, as is our tradition, and we will begin with our Chair of Finance and Law, Councilman Burgess. May I have Councilman Coghill for Councilman Burgess?
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1283, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 797 by increasing park reconstruction regional asset district parks by $54,290 from $965,000 to $1,019,290. Bill Number 1284, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 14, realigning a total of $4,322,000 between various accounts within the 2018 operating budget. This transfer is necessary for the 2018 close to meet final expenditures for fiscal year 2018. Bill Number 1285, Resolution to authorize and direct the incurring of non-electorial debt through the issuance of a series of general obligation bonds of the city in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $62,435,000. Bill Number 1286, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of finance to enter into an agreement with Clark Hill to serve as bond counsel for the purpose of rendering any and all necessary opinions with respect to the bonds and preparing such additional documents as may be necessary. Total costs not to exceed $36,125 and shall be paid using proceeds from the debt issuance. Bill Number 1287, Resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in the total sum of $6,857.02 in favor of Diane and Ronald K. Bocky as final settlement related to the action filed in the Common Pleas Court of Allegheny County. Bill Number 1288, Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in the total amount of $5,303.34 to Pepper Hamilton for professional consulting and legal services in relation to False Claims Act litigation. to False Claims Act Litigation. Bill Number 1289, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in favor of Gleason and Associates in an amount not to exceed $9,946 for the Professional Services in Connection with a Lawsuit filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number 1290, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in favor of Kettleston LLC in an amount not to exceed $10,082.20 for Professional Services in Connection with a Lawsuit filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number 1291, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Accept a Donation from Malkoa Corporation of $5,000 to be Deposited into the Public Safety Support Trust Fund.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Coghill, our Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Gross, your Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Harris, your Chair of Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Harris presents Bill Number 1292, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Human Resources and Civil Service Commission to Enter Into an Agreement with Willis Towers Watson for Services Related to Supporting the City with Development and Negotiation of Employee Benefits That Are Provided to City Employees for a Sum Not to Exceed $1,116,000 Over Four Years and for the Payment of Costs Thereof.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1293, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Execute Relevant Agreements to Receive Grant Funding from the Hulman Family Foundation, Nina Hamilton Fisher Foundation, to Provide Funds to Support the Creation and Support of a Domestic Violence Team housed in the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police, and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $500,000 for this Stated Purpose.
Great idea. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman O'Connor, our Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1294, Resolution Authorizing a Corporation Agreement Providing for the Transfer of Funds Not to Exceed $6,750,000 to the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the Purchase of Vehicles, Equipment, and Accessories for Use by City of Pittsburgh Departments and Authorities.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Kell Smith, our Chair of Public Work Services. May I have Councilwoman Strasburger for Councilwoman Kell Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents Bill Number 1295, Resolution Authorizing Resolution Number 701 to Now Read as Follows, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City to Enter Into an Agreement with PennDOT, under which PennDOT will make improvements too and transfer industrial highway approximately 1.2 miles of roadway to the city, and the city will transfer to PennDOT two current city street segments. Those street segment being one, Ecclesse Avenue from Baum Boulevard to Center Avenue, approximately 347 feet, and Center Avenue from Ecclesse Avenue to Holland Avenue, approximately 1,017 feet.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Strasburger, our Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair has three communications. I'll need a motion to receive, read, receive, and file each. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Council President presents Bill Number 1296, Communication from City Controller Michael Lamb Submitting a Fiscal Audit of the City of Pittsburgh Department of Finance, Real Estate Division, and Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh Tax Abatement and Tax Increment Financing Programs, dated December 21st, 2018. Bill Number 1297, Communication from Jennifer Oldzinger, Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting a $1,000 Donation on behalf of Paul D. Fitzsimmons for the Public Safety Support Trust Fund. Bill Number 1298, Communication from Jennifer Oldzinger, Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting an Acting Pay Approval for Irma Buchia, and Submitting an Acting Pay Approval on behalf of the Department of Innovation and Performance for Catherine Grober for the Acting Pay Policy Revised in March 2008.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Excuse me, may I have a motion to receive and file?
Second.
Second, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions? Thank you very much. That takes us into unfinished business. And with no unfinished business before the council, we go into reports of committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Deborah Gross, who is our Chair, excuse me, of Land Use and Economic Development.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I'll sign those after I forget to send the cover letter.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1282, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for January 9th, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1083, Resolution Approving a Conditional Use Application under the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zone in Article IV, to Allow PMC 717 Liberty Associates the Transfer of Development Rights from 908 Penn Avenue to 717 Liberty Avenue, Zone GTC Golden Triangle, Subdistrict C, Second Ward, Council District Number Six. Bill Number 1252, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 470, so as to Transfer Funds Within City Council from Preservation Pittsburgh Allegheny City Historic Gallery and Transfer These Funds to Sarah Heinz House. Bill Number 1253, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 471, so as to Transfer Funds Within City Council from Preservation Pittsburgh Allegheny City Historic Gallery and Transfer These Funds to Sarah Heinz House. Bill Number 1254, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 563, so as to Reprogram Funds Within City Council, Holy Wisdom Parish Food Bank, Preservation Pittsburgh Allegheny City Historic Gallery, and Transfer These Funds to Allen Place Community Services in Sarah Heinz House. Bill Number 1255, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 475, so as to Reprogram Funds Within City Council from Holy Wisdom Parish Food Bank, Preservation Pittsburgh Allegheny City Historic Gallery, and Transfer These Funds to Allen Place Community Services in Sarah Heinz House. Bill Number 1256, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 673, so as to Reprogram Funds Within City Council from Holy Wisdom Parish Food Bank, Preservation Pittsburgh Allegheny City Historic Gallery, Northview Heights Tenant Council, Tri Valley Athletic Association, and Transfer These Funds to Sarah Heinz House, Allen Place Community Services, and Rocks Performance Academy. Bill Number 1257, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 564, so as to Reprogram Funds Within City Council from Holy Wisdom Parish Food Bank, Preservation Pittsburgh Allegheny City Historic Gallery, Northview Heights Tenant Council, Tri Valley Athletic Association, and Transfer These Funds to Sarah Heinz House, Allen Place Community Services Gallery, and Rocks Performance Academy. Bill Number 1258, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 593, so as to Reprogram Funds Within City Council from Poise Foundation, Aquafonics, Northview Heights, West Park Court, Northside Leadership Conference, Allegheny City Sanitary, North Bureau Sewickley, MOW, Tri Valley, MOW, North Bureau Sewickley, MOW, Brighton Heights, MOW, and Transfer These Funds to Sarah Heinz House and Allegheny City Society, Artists, Image Resources, and Rocks Performance Academy. Bill Number 1259, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 594, so as to Reprogram Funds Within City Council from North Bureau Sewickley, Mills on Wheels, Brighton Heights Mills on Wheels, North Bureau Sewickley Mills on Wheels, Tri Valley, Northside Leadership Conference, Allegheny City Sanitary Fair, Poise Foundation Aquafonics, Northview Heights, West Park Court, and Transfer These Funds to Allegheny City Society, Artists, Image Resources, Rocks Performance Academy, and Sarah Heinz House. Bill Number 1260, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 754, so as to Reprogram Funds Within City Council Office from North Bureau Sewickley, MOW, Brighton Heights, North Bureau Sewickley, MOW, Tri Valley, and Transfer These Funds to Bridge Committee. Bill Number 1261, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 598, so as to Reprogram Funds Within City Council from North Bureau Sewickley, MOW, Brighton Heights, North Bureau Sewickley, MOW, Tri Valley, and Transfer These Funds to Bridge Committee. Bill Number 1262, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 742, so as to Reprogram Funds from the City Council Budget, Northside Senior Center, and North Senior Programming to Transfer Funds to Allegheny Mountain USA Boxing. Bill Number 1263, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 743, so as to Reprogram Funds Within City Council from Northside Senior Center and Northside Senior Programming to Transfer Funds to Allegheny Mountain USA Boxing.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have heard the reading and the title of these bills under our Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. We have further discussion, beginning with Councilwoman Harris.
Yes, and again, on my bills, this is money that has not been utilized. For years with these neighborhoods, and if they want some money, I will put it back in, but they really need to use it. They can't just sit there for years. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. So that concludes comment. You have heard the reading and the title of these bills. We have had discussion of the bills. Forgive me, the bills are now ready for final action. And all in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes, bills pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, having received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. That takes us into motions and resolutions. I only have one very brief meeting announcement, and that is that council will meet tomorrow, Wednesday, January 16th, at 10:00 a.m. for our standing committee meeting here in Council Chamber. Without further comment from members, now Councilwoman Harris?
Yes, I would just like to say, um, happy holidays for Martin Luther King Day, which originally is today. Monday is the day that is utilized, but today is really the birthday of Martin Luther King. Also, for those out there that think I'm ill because of my voice, I just want to say that I went in for a procedure about a year and a half ago, June. And when I come out of that procedure, my voice was like it is. I've been to eight doctors. My vocal cords were battered up pretty bad. And I am not ill whatsoever. It is just my voice from the procedure that I had. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Without further discussion then from members, may I have a motion to excuse our absent member, approve our minutes, and adjourn our meeting?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.